All right, now that we have chairs settled, I will call the meeting to order. First, thank you, everyone, for coming to the May Meeting of the Three Lakes Board of Education. Before I get started, I would just like to welcome Brian Fritz, this being his first meeting after elected office. We will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone can please rise and face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we move Administrator Report on the Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email, the Town of Three Lakes, Town of Monaco, Town of Sugar Camp, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and media notified by mail, WACD, WATK Radio.
Thank you. Next, we move to Amendments and Approval of Agenda.
We would like to make an amendment and remove five each from the agenda. We would like to double-check our figures and bring it back to the next board meeting.
If anyone is ready, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, to routine approvals, to approve minutes of the April 16, 2025, regular meeting. Any changes or concerns from the floor? If they were, there are none, I will take a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Mitch, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move in to the Treasurer's Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the checks to April 10, 2025 through May 14, 2025, per counts payable checks number 242-500-244 through number 242-500-300, and regular checks number 131042 through number 131163, manual check numbers 5845, 5866, 5956, and wire transfer numbers 2024-00214 through 2024-00241, in the amount of $779,814.73, and ACH payroll checks number 90045527 through number 90045776, and regular payroll checks number 59411 through 59413, in the amount of $370,518.56, for a total amount of $1,153,333.29. Second.
Just a record reflection on the payroll. The beginning numbers for both are a nine followed by three zeros. We have a motion by Mitch, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move into public comments. Are there any comments from visitors regarding any of the agenda items? Hearing none, we will move in to the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. We're going to, again, do an update on the Capitol referendum where we have been since we got together last month. The Executive Committee team has been brought together to begin some preliminary design and process decision-making, included representatives from admin, both school buildings, the Maintenance Department and the Nexus Partners. It was a large group because it included a big group from Nexus as far as their architects and design team. We also then talked about this large group will be broken down into subgroups by the schools, and then perhaps by like a maintenance group, et cetera. But we will run everything back through the exec group before it would come to the board for consideration. We had a kickoff meeting on April 28, and that's where we were able to meet all the people. There were 17 people involved in that meeting, and we had a follow-up meeting on May 13. During the May 13 meeting, we were able to really focus in on the blueprints, the square footage, and talk about what was still listed and where we wanted to put the most focus, especially looking at Sugar Camp, which took the majority of our time, as planned, because we wanted to see what we could do to expand some of the entryway in the secure entry and make more room for students coming in, which wasn't reflected in the conceptual design. And we made good progress there. The feedback was taken by Nexus and the team. They also walked the grounds again, and then when they come back together, they're going to share some design updates with us, and then we can look at that and see where we are next. We then again reviewed each of the projects that were listed at each of the buildings and reiterated this is what, yes, this is part of the referendum, but some of this is going to be done at district level already within our regular scheduled maintenance program. So there's always a little bit of flexibility to what extent is going to be done in district and what will be done by the referendum dollars. Caleb and I were able to meet with Rob Brown and his boss at Nexus. We went over the agreements that will be going to our attorney for review. It's just a lot of the language to, you know, who's responsible for what, completion of contracts if there was something wasn't done to satisfaction, and that's also right now in the process. Then we were able to talk with Kevin Mullin from Baird, and he is here tonight. He's going to be sharing information with you this evening, and he spent time with us giving us a rundown as to what our next steps are, how we want to share the information with you so you have a very good understanding at the board level before we bring it back next month for some actual decision-making. Caleb has also been working with a couple of different companies to discuss the investment process. He has met with PMA, which is focused and connected with the WISC, and we learned that about 76% of all districts in the state that are working through Capitol referendum right now are working with them. They have a nice process, asked lots and lots of questions. He also met with PMA, which they did a nice job too, but there was a little bit more complication there as far as what they wanted to do right now, still gathering more information, but it looks like probably favoring working with PMA at this point, and more information to come on that. Like I said, the designs are being formulated by the architects, and they're going to get it back to us for feedback and direction. And last but not least, Jen met with Deb from Nexus, the lady who worked with us on our campaign for public information, and talked about how we're going to reengage our website link, how we are going to start getting the messaging out so we have almost like a little, I would call it a barometer of progress. This is what we're doing, this is what's completed, we're now 30%, we're now 50%, so we're giving timely information. Jen and I have also discussed additional ideas that we would like to do, like weekly or bi-weekly video posts or chats, just might be little snippets but say, this is what's happened, so people don't wonder, what happened to this referendum, and try to get that all formulated out. So we feel pretty good about that place as well. So all in all, it didn't sound like a lot, but a whole lot's been happening behind the scenes in the past month to get ready for the next steps. Any questions that you might have for me, or Caleb, or Jen at this point? All right, more to come.
All right, thank you for the update and the work behind the scenes. Next, we move on to new business. Because this is our May meeting, we have a requirement to elect the positions of the Three Lakes School Board. At this time, in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 120.05 Sub 1 Sub C, we will elect a School Board President, Vice President, Treasurer, and Clerk from among our members for a period of one year until a School Board meeting is held on or within 30 days after the Fourth Monday in April of 2026. A secret ballot procedure is authorized but not required under Wisconsin statute. At this time, are there any members present who would prefer the election of officers by secret ballot? Hearing none, at this time, we will proceed with the election of officers by voice vote after nominations from the floor. As a current president, I will serve as the Chair for the duration of the election. If a new president is elected, that individual will take over the elected role immediately following this posted public meeting. This will also apply to all elected positions tonight. During the elections, I will open the floor to nominations. Any member of the Board can make a nomination, but a member may not nominate more than one candidate for a single officer position. Nominations do not need a second. Once nominations have concluded, I will ask for any further nominations. I will then ask for a motion and second to close the nominations. The Board will then vote to close the nominations. I will then ask for a vote for the officer position elected. If there is more than one nomination, the clerk will tally the results of the voice vote per nomination. Once a single nomination has been affirmed, I will ask the Board for a final vote on the officer position. Are there any questions? Nominations are now open for the position of School Board President.
I'll nominate Alicia Williams as School Board President.
I will accept the nomination. Are there any further nominations?
I'll nominate Stacy Klein as Vice President.
Next. Are there any further nominations for President? At this time, I will need a motion from the floor to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
So it'll run the same for each. So we have nominations open. Once the nominations are in, I'll ask for a close. We will do a motion and a second for the closure of the nominations, and then a vote on that and a vote on the position, just for clarity purposes. So we'll need a second.
A second.
Okay. So we have a motion to close the nominations for the position of School Board President. Motion was made by Josh, and we have a second by Stacy. I will abstain from vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I will open the nominations, oops, sorry. We need a second vote. So at this time, we will vote for the position of President with one nomination. I know it's redundant, but all those in favor of myself, Alicia Williams, for the position of President signify by stating aye.
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 None heard. Motion carries. Next, I will open the nominations for the position of School Board Vice President.
I will nominate Stacy Klein as Vice President, School Board Vice President.
Are there any other nominations for the position of School Board Vice President? If not, I would take a motion to close the nominations.
I'll motion to close.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Brian, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Now we'll need a vote. Because the nominations have been closed, a vote for the position of Vice President for Stacy Klein. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. None heard. Motion carries. Next, we'll open the floor for the position of School Board Treasurer.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mitch Ellis for Treasurer, School Board Treasurer.
Are there any further nominations for the position of Treasurer? If not, I would take a motion to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
I will second.
We have a motion by Josh, second by Brian. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. We will now vote on the position of Treasurer for Mitch Ellis. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. None heard. Motion carries. I'll now open the nominations for the position of School Board Clerk. I will nominate Josh Crowell for the position of School Board Clerk. Are there any further nominations for the position of Clerk? If not, I would take a motion to close nominations.
I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close nominations by Mitch, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. We'll now vote on the position of School Board Clerk, being Josh Crowell. All those in favor of the vote signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. We'll now move in to CISA delegate as well as alternate. Last year, I did serve as the CISA delegate for the Board. I am willing to, however, I am not opposed if anyone else is interested in serving in that capacity. Right now, the notice of the annual convention is out. We will need clarification because there is an error in CISA's report. So it says August 4, 2025, at 7:00 p.m., and they have it as a Wednesday in their official posting, and it is not a Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
So we'll...
It's the sixth.
So if it is in fact a Wednesday, or if it's actually Monday.
We need to know which day.
Correct. So knowing that, we're looking at dates of the Fourth or the Sixth of August at 7:00 p.m. The meeting of the delegation is at 7:00 p.m., again, in Tomahawk, at CISA 9.
I'm out for either one of those dates, so I would probably just bow out of doing any of that.
That's convenient.
I am also in Madison at training both of those days.
I'm fine. Stacy?
I would like to choose to decline at this time.
Okay. Okay, Mitch and I, all right, I'm happy to take point if someone's willing to make the nomination, unless you would like it, sir.
Uh, sorry.
Okay. So for formality's sake, can I...
I'll make a nomination for Alicia to be the CISA delegate.
Okay, at this time, I will need a motion to close nominations.
Make a motion to close nominations.
Second?
Second.
Stacy wins on the tie. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. We'll now need a vote for myself, Alicia Williams, to be the CISA delegate for the Three Lakes School Board. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 None heard. Motion carries. Mitch, are you willing to be the alternate in case of emergency?
No.
Would you like a vote on that one?
Yeah, I think we should.
I can nominate Mitch as the alternate CISA delegate for the Three Lakes School District.
Do we need to close that nomination?
Yep. I'll make a motion to close. Motion by myself, second by Brian. All those in favor to close the nominations for alternate delegate Mitch Ellis signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. For the vote of Mitch Ellis to be the alternate delegate for CISA, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you for bearing with us on that process. Next, we'll move to consider approval of the Personnel Report of New Hires and Retirements.
Very good. We have some new hires to report. Mark Busco for Three Lakes Elementary Principal, Madeline Suwinski for Speech and Language Pathologist and Deaf and Hard of Hearing Teacher, Susan Schmidt for Sugar Camp Elementary, Second Grade Teacher, Michelle Brown, Head Girls Basketball Coach, Leonard Perkins for Part-Time Custodian, and Adam Forsythe for Dishwasher. And since Mr. Busco is with us, Mr. Busco, would you like to have a few moments?
Sure.
He doesn't have any idea what's been going on.
I just want to say it's an honor to serve in this role, to work with Steve and take over all the amazing work he's done over the years, and I'm excited to hang out with the littles versus the high school. I think it's going to be an adjustment, but I'm excited. The staff over there is absolutely incredible, so I'm really looking forward to working with them and kicking off the school year right in September. So thank you, and I appreciate all the support.
Thank you.
We also have a retirement. Lisa Running has driven school bus for us for 20 years, and she will be retiring as of June 4. I also did have the opportunity to talk to Michelle Brown. She was hoping to be here tonight, but it didn't work out, and she wanted me to express her appreciation for hire of the girls' basketball coach, and she followed up with an email to me, so I'd just like to read to you if it's okay with the Board, what she shared. She said she's very excited to have this opportunity to lead the girls' program again. The entire group of girls as a whole has more potential ability and athleticism, I think, than any other group I've had a chance to work with in the last 15 years. Plus, they are all great student athletes, and they represent our community well. I can't wait to start working with them and instilling a team-first concept that will bring success to all, both on and off the court. And I can share that she was very pumped, so I just thought it would be important for you to hear that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. That program has been, had its, unfortunately, had a few more bumps and bruises than it needed, so hopefully, looking forward to enthusiasm from that, so.
Very good.
It is still...
Any other feedback or items with regard to the Personnel Report? Hearing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Next, we move to June meeting dates.
Our June meeting date will be scheduled for June 18 at 6:00 p.m. in Sugar Camp. Just as a reminder, we do two meetings a year at the Sugar Camp Building, and I also wanted to share with you all that that wonderful yearly evaluation is up again for me. So we have generally done it as part of this meeting. Should you want to do it at a different time or a different evening, we would need to recognize that and make a motion this evening to get that on the calendar as well.
Does anyone have feedback on interest in doing a separate meeting?
I personally just like knocking it all on one.
It's fine with me. If we are accepting of having it be one meeting, because of the change in venue for the June meeting, we will still need an action item in motion for the meeting date being in Sugar
I'll make a motion to have the June meeting on June 18, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in Sugar
We have a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. To streamline, again, being a month out, the process, and Brian, just for your knowledge, during evaluation, the first year is a little rough as you haven't had any contact or understanding of some of the inner workings, but being part of the process and the referendum gave you a little insight into performance over the past year. But basically, we look at Terry's evaluation and then add our constructive comments to that. So for the members of the Board, if we can gather that information between now and the June meeting, it allows the process to go a little bit more efficiently when we execute that evaluation. Any questions on that? Next, we move to consider approval of PROM 2026 Off-Campus Site Proposal.
Good evening, Board. I'm Nolan Walts. This is Avery Gubrad. And Brooke Newman. We are here on behalf of the class of 2027 to, like President Williams said, propose a date and location for... propose a date and location for next year's prom. Our proposed location, date is April 25th, 2026.
We would like to host our junior prom for 2026 at the Keterski Bar, which is where it was held this year. And I have been in contact with Carla, who helped organize the prom last year and is helping us organize the location for our prom next year.
We have chosen this location because the Keterskis have generously offered to let us use the space at no cost. And the prom that was hosted here there this year went very well because of it being an excellent location.
Any feedback, Mr. Zeus?
Feedback is I would completely second the point that Brooke just made that the prom this year was awesome in terms of decor. From a principal's standpoint, no issues that were negatives. And from all accounts, it was pretty well attended. And students stayed there for a while, which is not always typically the case at some of our dances. So two thumbs up with my feedback.
Truly appreciate the Keterskis being willing to provide that to the school. I was there this year. It is a beautiful venue and a great place for our students that's away from the school. So again, thank you to their family for allowing us that opportunity to bring this forward. Any other feedback for the three of you?
Guys are really on top of your game. Like that.
Early. Is there anything significant with that date?
Um, it's just like around the same time of year we've had it in previous years. It's kind of convenient before sports seasons start getting too serious, stuff like that.
Thank you. Any other questions for them, for feedback? Okay, is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a. I'll make a motion to approve the request for Prom 2026 to be held off-campus at the Keterski Bar with the proposed date of August 25th, 2026.
April.
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 April, what did I say?
August.
Oh my gosh. See, my kids say I do that all the time.
Yeah, but you don't believe them.
I know.
Mitch, second? I'm thinking about 1/4 of August, too. All right, so we have a motion on the floor by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Thank you to the three of you for coming in. I know it's a scary proposition to be in here, but it'll be that much better when you continue to attend these meetings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Juniors, that's why I'm having a hard time. How did that happen? No crying. No crying, Stacy. Next, we'll move into the referendum borrowing update with Baird.
All right, we have Kevin Mullen here with us on site. Thank you, Kevin, for joining us this evening. He has information that he has prepared for you. Like I said, this is kind of our prep work to get us ready for next month when we do some serious decision-making. So Kevin, with that, you can have the floor.
Well, great, thanks. And again, congratulations on passing the referendum and thanks for welcoming me to your board meeting tonight. So as mentioned, I put together a report and the reason, or the purpose of this report is I wanted to talk with you about what the next steps are for the financing decisions for you as you proceed. Next board meeting, there'll be a resolution for the board to consider, which is referred to as parameters resolution. At least, that's my suggestion. And so I wanted to have an opportunity to talk about that with you as a board prior to you seeing that at your next board meeting. So this presentation basically touches on three things. The first is it's going to give you an update in terms of where interest rates are. The second, we're going to talk about the plan of finance and how that fits into the overall process of what you're trying to accomplish. And the third is to lay out the timeline of what needs to happen between now and the time the money comes to fund the project. So with that said, I'd like to just turn to the first page, which is the interest rate chart. So when the school district gets ready to borrow, because you are a public entity, a school district, and you're borrowing for public purposes, you can issue tax-exempt debt. Tax-exempt debt generally offers a lower cost of funds because the borrower, the investor that invests in your community, invests in the school district project, does not pay interest on the interest income, or does not pay taxes on the interest income that you pay for the project. And so they're willing to give you a lower interest rate because they have this tax advantage to owning the bonds. It's a municipal bond, tax advantage, tax exempt municipal bond. So this chart shows you where a 20-year borrowing rate for the highest-rated borrowing of municipal bond, the basket of AAA bonds, has been for the last 30 years. So it's the 20-year spot rate for looking back 30 years. And the reason that I wanted to show this to you is because it shows the general trend in that interest rate going down into the COVID years and then coming back up. And so if you were to look at the lens of interest rates just between, you know, the period of time when COVID ended and now, you would say that interest rates have gone up significantly, though they have, but from a historically low point in time. Looking back 30 years, though, we're in a very average interest rate environment right now. So that's the first takeaway that I'd like you to have. The second, in the box up above, it shows you what's happened to that interest rate over the last year. And you can see that interest rates have, you know, jumped around a little bit. They've, you know, kind of been in the range right around 3.5% to 4%. They were slightly higher roughly a month ago and have come down. But there's been a lot of volatility, especially in the last week, around interest rates. Interest rates move based on what's happening, both with regard to the economy. So generally, inflation and threats and fear of inflation are bad for interest rates because, you know, you're going to be issuing a fixed-cost interest rate for a period of 20 years. If an investor feels that there's a lot of inflation in the economy, that erodes the value of that promise over the 20-year period of time. So that's generally not a good condition for interest rates. Geopolitical happenings also have a big impact on that interest rate. And so generally speaking, when there are things that are unsettling in the geopolitical landscape, generally, bonds are considered a safe investment. People, you know, move towards bonds. So, you know, both of those things have been in play recently and it's created a fair amount of uncertainty and some, you know, movement in interest rates. And so when we build a plan, one of the things that we want to do is to give you the flexibility to enter the bond market with flexibility, with, you know, to have some decision-making and some dexterity to make that decision as to when that timing is. So that's one of the things that we have in the back of our mind as we're developing a plan. Any questions on that? I won't spend a lot of time on the second chart. If you turn that page, it takes the blue chart and adds a second component. This pink line is actually the two-year treasury investment, which is a taxable investment or a taxable interest rate. So as was alluded to earlier, when you borrow the funds, you're going to receive the money in. You'll probably work with an investment partner to reinvest that money between the time you get the bond proceeds and the time money is needed for construction. And so this pink line shows you generally where that reinvestment rate has been. Recently, it had been slightly higher than the borrowing rate, but that's kind of come together. So one of the things that we took into consideration when we were determining how much to borrow was what this relationship is. So generally speaking, that interest income that you earn because it's taxable and you borrowed at a tax-exempt rate is considered arbitrage income. It's, you know, money that you're making above that tax-exempt interest cost. The federal government doesn't love the fact that we borrow at tax-exempt rates and you're investing at a taxable rate. And so they have a lot of rules around how much interest you can earn during that period of time. Generally speaking, if you spend the money, if you borrow more than $15 million in a calendar year and you spend the money in a two-year period based on a schedule, you get to keep all that arbitrage income. And so that's one of the things that we had in mind when we built this plan. We'll talk about the plan in a minute. So generally speaking, looking at your draw schedule, we feel you can spend $17 million without hitting that arbitrage penalty comfortably. So first phase of the borrowing, we're suggesting a $17 million borrowing based on that. When the plan of finance was put together, we always assumed we would borrow two 20-year financings. The state allows you to borrow for up to 20 years. We know that this project is going to be constructed over a period of time that exceeds one year. So when the plan was put together, we assumed we would borrow a portion in 2025 for 20 years and a portion in 2026 for 20 years. So ultimately, having a 21-year payback to keep the tax impact to your taxpayers down, spread that cost over a longer period of time. So we had to determine, you know, what was a reasonable split. We feel like, you know, with the threat of interest rates moving up, the more that we can get into this first phase of the borrowing, the better. And so we kind of dialed into that $17 million, that amount, as the first phase. Questions on that? So we turn to the second page or the third page here, which is, financing plan considerations. So our goals, when we put that plan of finance together, our first and foremost goal is to make sure that we hit the tax impact that was projected to the public. We said that it would be creating a 58 cent per thousand dollar impact. We want to make sure that we're in position to hit that number. And then we also want to minimize your total interest cost, obviously, you know, put you in a position to get the lowest interest rate in the current interest rate environment and minimize your interest rate risk. And also give you the opportunity to maximize your reinvestment income. So those were the, kind of, the four pillars, not necessarily in that order. Primarily, we want to make sure you hit your promise to the taxpayer. And then the other three pieces, we want to give that flexibility. So in terms of minimizing your total interest cost, we suggest that you get a bond rating from a credit agency. For borrowing of this size and for the credit that you are, we think that that's worthwhile. We looked at both Standard and Poor's and Moody's in terms of which credit agency would generally favor your location, your financial picture. And we feel strongly that Moody's would probably be a better direction than Standard and Poor's for a few different reasons. We put, you know, your credit into the metrics for both Moody's and Standard and Poor's to get like kind of a good estimate as to where that credit rating would come in. And we feel like Moody's is going to give you the best path. So we've actually started the process of reaching out to Moody's for that credit rating. We talked about the 20-year, 21-year repayment structure. And then in Phase 1, we're suggesting $17 million of the total 20 points, or 21.6 that's been issued. So that'll allow us to begin investing the funds early. The current interest rate, conservatively, slightly conservatively, is estimated to be 4.93% for that $17 million borrowed over a 20-year period of time, which is below the estimate that we had talked about during the referendum process. We also assumed that the second phase of the borrowing would be borrowed at 5.25% because that's, you know, further out. So when we did the plan for the referendum, we had split more evenly. I think we had 11.6 in the first phase and 10 million in the second phase. By moving more of it into the first phase, I think that that is one of those things that could, you know, guard against interest rates continuing to move up. So I like that from my standpoint in terms of how that looks and feels. We also talked about parameters resolution. So a parameter, the board can approve the bond sale in two different ways. One way, and kind of the more traditional way, maybe, you know, 10 years ago, was that we would schedule the bond sale to occur on the same date and time as a regularly scheduled board meeting. The bonds would be sold in the morning and then approved by the board in the evening. Works great because everybody gets the information on the bond sale at the same time. What doesn't work great is that, you know, a month and a half from the time that you're selling bonds, you pick the date and time when you're going to be selling those bonds. If things move, it doesn't give you much flexibility. So we've suggested most school districts and other issuers switch to a parameters resolution. So a parameters resolution is a resolution that describes generally what the bond issue would look like with amounts and interest rates and costs not to exceed. That's the type of resolution that you would be considering at your next board meeting. Then subsequent to that authorization, as soon as you're ready, you would have the authority to begin marketing the bonds. If the bonds could be marketed as described in the parameters resolution, you would have the authority to move forward with that sale. The school board superintendent, board president would have the ability to sign off on those details and then report back to you that it met the parameters that were described. So that gives you a lot more flexibility. So that's another one of those tools when we talk about giving flexibility in terms of timing and entering the bond market. So I'll stop there for a second. It's a lot to absorb, but that's what the parameters resolution is. And then we would probably do exactly the same thing roughly early in January of next year, closing around March to then start that second 20-year borrowing for the 4.6 million, which is the balance of the project. So we could have moved it all into this year, but that would have constricted everything into a 20-year borrowing as opposed to a 21-year borrowing, which would have put pressure on that 58 cent piece. But I also think we would have had trouble spending all of that within the two-year parameters or within that two-year window, which only means that we'd give back the arbitrage income, but if we don't need to, yeah, I think that it's a good strategy. And we have tools and, you know, there are strategies that we can use next year if interest rates are significantly different than this year that still, yeah, I think would leave us enough comfort to still follow through on the tax impact projection that we talked about. So in terms of looking at your credit rating, we think that you'd probably end up in the AA3 to A1 credit category. I'm guessing probably A1, just, you know, given your local economy being strong, your financials are really, really good. But you're a relatively small school district. You can't change who you are. And that, you know, is one of the things that is a slight drag on the credit quality, just absolute size. But A1 is a very good rating and I think that's generally where we'll end up. The plan of finance assumes a 1.5% growth in actual value each year, fair market value. You've had growth that's been much higher than that recently. But your growth in value has been very much, much more inflationary growth than real growth. So when you look at like new stuff, real value, that value growth has been more like 1.5% to 2%, so we just assume that 1.5%. So your payments go up slightly each year to accommodate that future growth. And so, you know, our hope is that the tax impact is steady throughout. If you have growth that's higher than 1.5%, your tax rate will actually go down. But if it's all inflationary growth, you know, the real feel will be the same. But not, you know, I think 58 cents is still very reasonable. So next page is the numbers page, just laying it out in terms of what that looks like with both phases rolled in together, assuming 5.25% for that second financing piece. You can see if we have the $17 million locked in at 4.93 plus that second leg at 5.25%. Our target is still the 50, you know, right now would be 57 cents, but below that 58 cent per thousand that we had targeted to taxpayers. And so that's the goal. And then the last page, and then I'll stop talking, crumbs, is the timeline in terms of what needs to happen. And you can see I've highlighted in yellow the two board. And then really, tonight's not an action item other than, you know, a general understanding of the plan of finance questions and then an acknowledgement or, you know, an okay to move forward with that. But then the real action item for the board would be at the 18th board meeting where the board would have a parameters resolution to consider. All the other pieces are really, you know, pieces where the administrative team, Jacob, Terry and I, and Baird, would be working through the process of getting the financing ready to go, working with the attorneys, working with credit agencies. of getting the financing ready to go, working with the attorneys, working with credit agencies, and getting the issue out to investors. So the goal would be to have funds in your hand the first week of July for that first phase. So a lot of information. I didn't want to drop it all on you and injure you. So any questions as you digest it?
The tax-free rate of four nine seems a little high. I've seen rates as low as four two pretty recently within the last month, or as high as five and a quarter. How confident are you that four nine is?
Confident? So, you know, that's when we put this together roughly a week ago. You know, that was, I had probably thirty basis points, you know, four sixty-three compared to a four ninety-three of cushion in it. Probably given up ten basis points of that this week. Part of it is, is that, you know, when you look at that seventeen million, it's, the average life of that is probably twelve to fourteen years, you know, so it's a little longer. So, you know, that is really where the current market is for an insured A one borrowing right now. Feel very confident about that. Slightly conservative, but not a lot conservative. So, you know, the shorter, the shorter the maturity, the lower the interest rate. The higher the credit quality, the lower the interest rate. So this is assuming an A one borrowing wrapped with bond insurance for double A rating.
And then the arbitrage rate that we could figure, are we using like the LGIP rate? Or what would we be?
So we haven't used A rate yet. But generally speaking, that's probably in the high three percent range right now in terms of that reinvestment.
Okay.
For a two-year treasury. And that's really not my domain, but, you know, that's roughly what we've seen with bond issues that have been closing recently.
I'm sorry to ask a bunch of quick, is there, is there any, you laid it out pretty well. I'm a banker, something that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there, is there any, is there, would there be any benefit to break up that seventeen million into smaller chunks? Obviously, you're, we're playing an interest rate hedge right now, counting that the interest rates are going to rise. But the, the income that we could save from borrowing would, I mean, the arbitrage is not going to be that great, even if there is an arbitrage at that point. So it is, can you walk us through that? Is that a possibility?
Yeah, so the reason, you know, when you borrow like seventeen million dollars, there's, you know, the cost of the rating, the bond council cost and the cost of disclosure council plus the underwriting cost. So those are the, you know, costs that are embedded in there. And so, you know, we could do, you could do a smaller loan that, you know, you do a little bit in June, you do a little bit in, you know, December, you know, and just kind of chunk it out that way. And then, you know, obviously that cuts down on the borrowing cost. But then you're also, you know, those fixed costs, you're kind of having those fixed costs each time that occurs. That's one aspect of it. Really, I think the seventeen million getting that in the door right now, even though, you know, we may not be earning exactly what the cost of borrowing is because we're investing it two, two years and, you know, borrowing for twenty, everything that we earn can be used for the project. And so it's a way to, you know, make sure that, you know, you've got enough funds for, you know, what is really a remodeling project. And if, you know, at the end of the project, you can either use that additional investment income to reduce the borrowing cost or to, you know, make sure that you get everything you want in the project. And so we've seen most school districts use that as a component of the project cost. And really, yeah, I think there's a benefit to doing more now as opposed to later.
Okay, that makes sense because you're in the three percent on the seventeen million at a low and then that gets set aside and then reinvested into the project.
And that four point nine three percent also includes, you know, we've included in that all the costs involved in the financing as like the all-in interest cost. And so, you know, rates that you may be seeing may be for just like traded investments that wouldn't necessarily reflect, you know, the original cost.
Any other questions, feedback?
Terry, if we start drawing right away, I mean, if we, if we start this in July, I mean, are we to a point where?
We will be because we're already.
We'll be ready to go.
We already will have bills. We already have the design process going on. The architects getting all of that in order. We should have that finalized for sure by October. So it would be right on schedule. It would be perfect timing, actually. The other thing that I really liked that Kevin was able to do in talking with Kevin and with Caleb and I is when you look back on page six, it was really important to us that we stayed at that rate of the fifty-eight cents mil or less as we had promised to our public. And that, I think, is extremely important with our credibility to go ahead and make sure that we're living to the words that we put out there.
So for the return in June for the meeting, will there be an update based on the current climate, interest climate at the time? On top of, will there be additional information with regard to the parameters resolution and the expectation?
Yeah, so actually, you know, assuming that you're comfortable with moving forward with that timeline, in June, we would have the parameters resolution pulled together. We'd likely have the credit rating in hand at that point in time. So we'd actually be in a position to go into the bond market probably within a week or two of that decision. But I also, you know, did not want, it feels maybe like, hey, we just passed in April and here we are in, you know, May, we're talking about, you know, what next steps are. I didn't want that parameters resolution to be the first thing that you saw in terms of what that information looked like.
This is a completely separate question. Is there any impact to the volume of districts across the state who are going through the same process?
Yeah, in terms of investor appetite for the bonds, we've seen, you know, so thankfully, you know, these bonds are marketed not just here in Wisconsin, although, you know, we will offer them to, you know, local investors, local banks. Banks, you know, will be probably part of the investment community that's interested in them. But it's also a national product. And so, you know, there are mostly, most buyers of municipal bonds, especially above ten million dollars, are insurance companies and trust funds that are buying nationally. And so, you know, they're looking at Wisconsin paper compared to other pieces. So it's not necessarily just Wisconsin that we're keeping an eye on. There has been a lot of general municipal issuance nationally. But, you know, it's not unusual, not, you know, something where people are like, you know, stepping back from Wisconsin investments because there's a lot of them available.
Any other questions? I really appreciate you coming in and offering information and answering your questions.
My pleasure. Great questions. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm sure you and Caleb will be talking very, very soon.
Sounds good. Thanks. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too. Okay. Next, we'll move to consider approval of open enrollment applications.
Every year at this meeting, we have to bring forward the open enrollment applications and share with the board what has been approved and what has been denied. This year, there was thirteen total applications. We have approved eleven and denied two. I have some information there for you because historically there has been an ask. There are, let's see here, oh, my number is through there. But there are some that are new and there are some that are reapplications. In the outgoing, you will see that there is one applying to Northland Pines and four applying to Rylander. And I can't give you specific reasons as to why the outgoing's are what they are. But we've watched this every year and historically, it's family choice, it's preference of daycare, it's preference of a parent working there. So that is what is actually more of the motivator than, you know, ending a relationship with the district. Those we're well aware of and we don't have anything reflected in this. Like we looked at the beginning, eleven are new. Remember this, these numbers are very fluid. I would say by the start of school, we will probably have a few more coming in. I would not expect that we would have more going out. Generally, we know what the path is, but sometimes there's a move in the family and that warrants it as well. Caleb, did you want to share anything about the ratio into out?
Yeah, we actually just got the data from this year. And so coming out, the final out was seventy-seven point six students, so seventy-eight total students. And then, or sorry, coming in was seventy-eight students and going out was sixty-six. And that'll end up being a net positive of about a hundred thousand dollars for us, which is above what we've been doing the last few years. So positive was there.
Several of our open enrollment applications are for 4K. So again, when they start with us early, they stick with us.
Just a question. So based on the, the names of the denial and the accepted, is there a familial concern with we accepted one and denied the other child?
Well.
Or is that a coincidence? Because last name connection. So for Three Lakes High School?
What we have to do is base it on if it's a special ed request. We don't have room within the program. That's what bases that denial. Carrie, is that?
That's correct. Yes, there was one that was a sibling.
And that was explained to the parent?
So my question is, do we lose the high school student because of the denial for the incoming child?
I guess that's a parent decision based on that.
I just didn't know if we had knowledge on that yet.
I have the same question.
There was communication with the parent in explaining the process and I'm not sure where the decision was going to land.
And we have had split situations before. If we can make it happen, we can't, we do. But when we, in January, look at our programming, placement availability, we have some pretty strict guidelines that we have to go with.
Absolutely. Any further questions or follow-up? Hearing none, I would take a motion when ready.
I'll make a motion to approve the open enrollment applications that meet the criteria as presented.
One second.
We have a motion on the floor by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Okay, and next we move to consider approval of salaries and contracts for district staff, including busing contracts for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year.
I think you're familiar with what we do. We really watch closely several factors when we're looking at salary projections. Among those are what we have budgeted for. And when we do our referendum, which we passed, we look at that two percent to three percent range. We like to try to stay within that. During COVID years, there was quite a bit of flexibility and volatility within there that we, you know, reflected at that time to keep staffing, to make sure that things were being done right. There was a big push for, you know, people beg borrowing and stealing other, other staff members. And we really like the continuity of having a strong team here. And that's really important to the board as well as to the administration and the community. Looking at where we are at, we felt we had to stick with the two percent increase with the planning. Also, we've been getting our insurance projections right along and we have been running higher, at a higher loss rate throughout the entire year. So that is something that will factor in when they finally get to us, what those costs are going to be. We don't foresee that going down a lot, which is going to too into the overall budget. So we have to be very cognizant of that as well. I would say also to share with you, we are a very generously paying district. I always go on record in saying we don't want to be apologetic for that. We truly believe we will invest in the best and the highest quality. But what that also means, if you're not part of the best or part of the highest quality, then we have to make sure that we're doing things to invest in those teachers or, and staff, I should say, or help them move on. Because we have made a commitment to our public through their referendum support in what we do, that we are presenting the very best, highest qualified instructors and making sure our students get the best education that is at all possible out there. Those are some of the three or four bigger considerations that I want you to keep in mind with this. Caleb, did you want to share anything as well as what we've talked about?
Just, I would, I would emphasize the health insurance aspect of it. We're in a unique situation with a nine-one renewal. So we're kind of always the last to, most districts renew on seven-one. So we're always kind of like the last one to get our renewal there. So it would be nice to have those numbers before we start talking about compensation, but unfortunately, it's just not an option for us. And then the other thing is, remember, we're still on the step and lane system here. So while it might be just a two percent increase, when, when you factor in those step and lane movements, most staff's looking at a four or five percent increase.
Exactly. Thank you for remembering to mention that. And then if we've had staff members who have actually completed programs, credits, they even see a more significant step up than the, the basic rate. So we feel that. So we feel that we are meeting and exceeding what other districts are able to offer around us and proud to do so, but have to also be very aware of living within our budget.
Has there been conversation with the staff at the expected percentage?
Not in recent months. There is an understanding, I can say that we stick very closely with our rates that we put in the referendum. That's understood. I wouldn't expect that they would, we'd be looking for more of a higher increase because of the step in the lane, but I have not had a recent conversation with them in the last, I would say, last two to three months.
Because overall, the percentage comes in below the CPI.
Yes.
However, the CPI is on the decline as far as what it would be January first, 2026. So I was just curious if there had been any feedback.
And the CPI is total bargaining, which we don't have a bargaining group here. We try to reflect that, but also I believe that we have to include the benefits portion in that as well. And if we wanted to go very closely to that, our insurance could knock us right out of the even two percent increase. That is my concern.
I know it's a lot of work. Have we ever talked about trying to switch from a nine-one to a seven-one?
It's, yeah, it's absolutely possible. We could just do a short renewal when we do our nine-one. And I, if you give me the go-ahead to do that, I would love to take that on.
I mean, if it's, I mean, it could benefit everybody.
We've been talking with them since January.
Yep. I'd be all for that.
I said, I know it's, I know it's a little extra work, but, but it might help to solidify our budget a little bit more.
Yeah, and I brought it up and it's, it's absolutely something.
Terry, if we wanted to entertain that moving forward, is that, I mean, is that just part of your discussions with the renewal process? Or do you need any sort of approval from us or?
I think we just, from what we've gathered information-wise in the past, that we could just move to that. It would mean a change for the staff. We'd have to educate them and inform them how that would, you know, look differently.
The issue is, is that deductible? You lose three months of when you meet that deductible. You kind of lose that three months where everything is free.
Any questions, follow-up on this? Hearing none. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the two percent increase of district staff salaries, including busing contracts for the 2025-2026 school year as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Mitch, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. As always, Caleb, thank you for the work and putting that schedule together. Okay, we are moving past each into aye. We'll next go to School Forest Camp Three update report.
All right. If you've driven by, we have some wonderful work that's been accomplished. Thank you to Pitlook and Wick. And it's beautiful to see the gravel down and the, the grass poking up through the sides. It looks like it's ready or very close to ready to go. So we are excited about that. Since we last met, we did have the hearing on, let's see when that was. That was Thursday last week. And both Alicia and Mitch were there. What we learned was that our judge heard both sides of the cases again and the public argument. And he voted, he denied the plaintiff's summary request. And he also went ahead and granted that Three Lakes, based on the factual information, he granted full summary of judgment to us. And speaking with our attorney, Ron Stadler, following up, he said that he wanted me to share this with you, that the circuit court denied the plaintiff's motion and granted in favor of the district finding there is nothing in Wisconsin law that prohibits a district from owning or operating a trap shooting range on school forest property. Both sides argued about whether a school must expel a student for having a gun on school grounds, but the judge stated that he did not need to resolve that issue to rule whether or not the district could have a trap range. While the court did not rule on that issue, we had argued and continue to believe that there is no requirement that a student be expelled for conduct that has been approved by the district. The conversation actually got quite deep when the judge was making his ruling. And he pretty much reiterated when comments were made that, well, if there's not guidance on what you can do with your property, then you could put up a bus barn or you could do other kinds of development. And he said, it's your property. You could do that. So with that, I'd like Alicia or Mitch to share your thoughts as to the outcome of the hearing.
First, I guess from my opinion, this was before I was even on the board, but the amount of work and had some level of heartache that went into fighting this battle for a significant period of time. I think it was a big, big win for the school district of Three Lakes as well as our citizens who have waited for this resolution to come forward. One of the things that the judge highlighted is that in the statute, there are broad powers by the board for the district. And that's why the individuals on this board are elected in Three Lakes to make those decisions. And his intention was to keep that power in control in the Board of Education versus making a ruling that would essentially limit our powers of what we can do with property that is owned by the district. So again, appreciate all of the work, especially by Terry and Mr. Stadler that has gone in to years of, of fighting this battle. I think it was a big, big win for Three Lakes.
I think it was a big win for the state. I mean, there's other districts that are looking at the same issue and Three Lakes didn't back down and wonderful.
Yeah, as I had said, I appreciated the board's direction and stamina because it does hit a point where you almost hit that fatigue of continuing forward when you come up with the same arguments. I think we had very fine representation by Mr. Stadler and his other attorney there, Dawn, and felt like they did a great job of supporting us. They're still with us. We are waiting to hear what that final summary written by the judge is. We haven't received it yet, but we will be sharing that when we do receive that as well. Right now, I would also remind the board that our plans are not to develop that as a trap range. We are looking forward. We have been generously given acceptance by, you know, the Allsagers and continue to pursue that path. But we also are very conscientious about, we had to act within the school board authority powers and we can't necessarily speak for what another board in the future may choose to do, should it not be us. So I thank all of you for your, your guidance on this one.
Pardon the pun, but we are not necessarily out of the woods yet. There is a chance, possibility that they could choose to go to the appellate court for a different decision. We won't know that until after the summary of judgment is signed by the judge. So both parties have to agree to that summary. It will be signed by the judge. And then they will have an opportunity to appeal the ruling at the circuit court.
I guess that being said, you know, just to hammer home what Terry mentioned also, that we have no plans at this time to develop that into a trap range. So whether that makes a decision or helps a decision on that, depending on how that comes out, at this time, I think that's a big part of public knowledge. I guess just a quick edit on this in the administrative content. It says, May twenty, Thursday, May twenty-first. That was actually Thursday, May fourteenth.
That's the answer, right. That's what threw me. Thank you, Josh.
On this topic, before we move on, is it wise then to wait for the summary judgment to be received and to see whether or not there is any sort of appeal or if both parties agree on it before we start to do minor things like connecting trails from parking lot to the existing trail system, et cetera? Or is it free to go on those things right now? Not, not creating a trap range, but making the trails link up with what we've already exist, the existing trails that were already out there from where the parking lot is now? Is the next project in the back of my mind for making it accessible in the fall for school children? Does it have a place to park a bus now?
Exactly. And that development of the parking lot was such a project, provided that we're not filling in wetlands or doing anything of that nature. We are not even developing a trap range, which is what this ruling said. But it is our property that we can be used. As I would advise, we do not want to be doing any kind of moving of earth and dirt that we would potentially be infringing on wetland. We know our wetland areas pretty well and cutting trails or working within those parameters, I think we're absolutely fine to move forward.
It'd be only with a steel chainsaw.
And the guidance from Mr. Stadler was that with the trap range off of the table, the intent of this is to allow our staff and students to be using this as an educational area and that's the priority. So those projects should continue.
Any other feedback? Great, it's been heavy. Let's get into district-related positive happenings.
Not everybody all at once.
Speaking of trees and forests, we, we visited Trees for Tomorrow on Monday and it was a really neat experience. Kids got a chance to do some environmental education, fit in well with our current curriculum. Had a chance to, you know, see some animals, talk about some animals, talk about their habitats and how that works into the curriculum. They're currently working on different trees, different tree types. So it was a good experience. I, I'd never been there before, but I really enjoyed it. I'm a middle class and I thought it was really well-done, well-done show. Also, district happenings, I'm getting into the high school a little bit here, but I don't know if you knew this already, but last night, our girls softball team secured a conference championship outright, beating Lael and Wobino two games in a row. Our boys track team also won conference last night in the track meet that we hosted. And coming up, our boys baseball team still has a shot. If Brandon beats Florence, we would have a three-way tie for a championship. So things are going well.
Just have one. The running club that Mr. Waltz and others started culminated, I think, one day, right? With the fun run. So I was talking to Jeff this morning. He said he had thirty-two students who participated in that, ranging from, I think there was a kindergarten student all the way up. I've watched that a few times. The kids were engaged, happy and active out there. And a lot of our staff helped out with that over those several weeks of that run. So it's really successful.
That was super great that Jeff and people got that going because my daughter is hard to get off the couch. That's all she talked about, like, was the biggest thing she had going. So it was super nice that they did that for them.
I can go. I got a list. It's been a busy couple of weeks and then it's going to get busier the next two. So we had our elementary spring concert. We had a junior high concert where sixth grade was involved in that on Monday. Sixth grade also took a tour last week, Thursday, before the rehearsal, along with Three Lakes tour to the junior high to kind of see lockers and classrooms and stuff like that. We also kind of tried to get the sixth grade groups together and we did a trip through the Potawatomi Center. So we played basketball, swimming, soccer, video games, all kinds of stuff, just to kind of unite the two groups to prepare for next year. So the S T O color run was two weekends ago. They raised over eight thousand dollars, which will be used well for field trips and stuff like this. Fourth grade went to Madison and Treehaven as well. And then kind of following with Steve, we, you guys, most of you know Mrs. Lemoine. She always did the mile walk or feel up to play sixty. We kept that going and this year, we walked over two thousand miles as a school. So we had our kind of end of the year raffle and we gave away a bunch of footballs and mini helmets and stuff like that. So I think that's it.
High school-wise, we had the YRBS survey is all completed. I know there was certainly some my part of being able to get it done in the timeline in which we started the process this school year, but it's done in the books. Students have completed that. That's a good thing. As the guys mentioned, spring concert, performing arts have been busy since, since our last meeting. Spring concert just happened this week, Junior High High School. It was a fantastic performance, good stuff. The Drama Club had their presentation end of April. That went well. State Soul and Ensemble happened. We had a lot of great results there. And Large Group Festival, we host that here every year and that went well here. And it's, it's always a major thing to pull off, but we're going to do it because I'm talking with the Northern Lakes Conference principals one day more. Nobody else has the facility to do it in, in that little crew. So we'll keep on doing that. ACT preliminary results are, are in. They're, they're embargoed yet. We're not supposed to share them publicly, so I can't speak to specifics. I'll give you a more official report with the data later, but this principal is relatively happy with the results he received so far. And I want to point out a really good thing. Typically, we get results for composite scores and all the specific subjects right away. And then shortly thereafter, we get the results from students who have accommodations approved for them. And in most places, in most years, you see a significant drop in your overall scores after the second round of scores are reported. And I'm happy to report in a true flex rate favorably, Mrs. Volk, on the programming we have in place for our students with accommodations because it did not see a significant drop. So the, the second score, the overall score is real similar to what it was originally reported. It's, it's as tight as I've ever seen it anywhere. So that's really good. Really, really reflects well on some of our 504s and IEPs and things like that. So good work there. Last, but certainly not least, our senior awards and scholarship night happened last week, Wednesday. Happy, proud to, to report one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars of scholarship support locally was shared with our senior class. So that's a huge number for a school our size, for sure. That doesn't count the scholarships that kids are getting at their institutions or colleges of choice. That's, that's the local stuff, folks. So big deal. I thank the community a lot in that program and I'd like to do that at the board level too, for sure. That's, that's a lot of community support for, as we know, have kids in college. It's well-needed. Post-secondary education is not cheap. So thank you to the community for that.
Just a follow-up out of curiosity. Was there any adverse feedback from the community or parents on the YBRS survey?
I received none. Mr. Bach indicated that there was one or two students who opted out that I'm aware of. At junior high, I had two.
Okay. But otherwise?
Nothing negative. No.
Okay. Because that has been a, an issue in the past about doing that survey. So, okay.
That's not to say we couldn't get some tomorrow because it was fairly recently that kids took it.
And of the two in the junior high.
What's that?
One of those students appeared, opts them out of most of those, not just YRBS, but many, many kind of testings.
I mean, not just YRBS, but many, many other testing stuff, so.
Okay.
No news is good news sometimes. Any other feedback? Okay. If there are none, we'll move into WASB correspondence and updates.
I put an admin content link for you. We haven't done this for a while, but I thought it would be nice if in the next couple of weeks, actually before June thirtieth, if you could go ahead and fill that out. And for someone like you, Brian, who's brand new, you're not going to be able to answer a lot of the questions. You're going to, you know, be at the very baseline. But I think it's really important that we get it done, and then we start having some data to go forward comparing to where our strengths are, where we maybe are a little heavier stack with our, our knowledge and abilities, and maybe some areas that we want to look at for future development. So take a look at it. If you have any questions, please reach out to Nikki or I, and we can help give you a little bit of guidance. But it's actually a matter of just getting into it and giving it a try.
Okay. Anything else? All right, next we will move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, sub-one, sub-C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to consider individual staff contracts, hiring, and or resignation, retirement of staff. When ready, I would take a motion from the floor.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin stats nineteen point eight-five, one C.
One second.
Is that right? Mitch. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn to executive session by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion carries. Thank you for everyone for coming tonight.